Good evening. This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated by the agenda. Visitors requesting permission to address the board on a specific agenda item should sign in before the meeting starts on the form in the board table. The board requests a discussion time limit of three minutes on any specific agenda item, and we ask visitors to make only one appearance per item. We ask those addressing the board to speak from the podium and state their name and address. Board Policy 0167 dot three dictates that personnel issues will not be addressed. Concerns about individual employees of the district should be brought to the superintendent or designate. The meeting site is fully accessible. Any person requiring further accommodation should contact the superintendent at the school corporation central office. Excuse me. The Board of Trustees respectfully request those guests and visitors in attendance be courteous and silence their cell phones. Thank you. As is our custom, we begin with a prayer. Will you bow with me, please? Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and do the work of the school district. We pray that you will guide our decisions and our discussion and that everything we do is in the best interest of students, staff, and our community. Amen.
Call to order. Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Merritt, could you do that, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Everyone is present, so we do have a quorum. Mission statement. Mr. Bertrand.
Lebanon Community School Corporation will cultivate and reach every student by influencing and enriching their lives through the power of education and do so in a positive and safe learning environment.
Thank you. Good news. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you very much. It's my privilege this evening to share with the board some items of good news. First, I want to start off that tomorrow night, here in the Herman B. Wells Room at 6:30, we will be hosting a Raising Bullying Proof Kids, a nationally recognized speaker on digital citizenship and digital awareness, Mr. Tom Thielen will be presenting to parents and all community members that are interested. Prior to that, though, throughout the day tomorrow, we will be having all students in fourth, fifth, and then the middle school, third, fourth, fifth, and the middle school will be coming here to the high school, to the auditorium. And Ms. Scott has put this on. We did something similar last year. It was very well received by the students and staff. We're hoping to have more parent involvement this year, but it's kind of an awareness on everything from cyber bullying to some of the kind of pitfalls that students can encounter when they're on the Internet. So it's a great opportunity for our students to learn a little bit more about the realities of the Internet and the use there, and it's a great opportunity for parents to become a little more familiar with some of the things their children might encounter and how they can help their children utilize technology but yet not become a victim of it. So we're very excited about that. Equally exciting for us, and I'm sure most of us are aware, but I think it's great to just reiterate this, our Lebanon High School band placed ninth at the Indiana State Fair. Their show Fair Train, which if you've not seen it yet, it's an outstanding presentation from both musical standpoint and the dance group, received in-depth coverage in the Indianapolis Star. I tell you, Mr. Conrad is just to be commended for the hard work. All summer, those kids have, whatever the weather, they've been out pounding the asphalt, working on their routine, and it paid off. And I want to say, Ms. O'Rourke, there were over sixty bands, forty bands, they competed against?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight bands, and we placed ninth. And well deserved. And so one of those students also performed at halftime. That routine was at the ballgame Friday night. And just very proud of what the band and the dance folks have done this year. And so we're very pleased with that. Also, I'm pleased to announce Lebanon Middle School teacher, science teacher, eighth grade science teacher, Michelle Schultz, was notified she is a top-ten finalist for the Indiana Teacher of the Year Award. She will participate with an interview before the Department of Education Selection Committee on September sixteenth. So congratulations to Ms. Schultz, and we wish her the best. And so hopefully she'll, she will, not hopefully, she will represent us well. And so congratulations on her nomination to the top ten. And then also, last Friday night, I want to point a compliment to the high school staff. Mr. O'Rourke and his staff hosted a student tailgate Friday night. The weather didn't cooperate, but somehow rainy weather didn't keep about three hundred to three hundred and fifty students from coming. All the students received a complimentary T-shirt. Mr. Levine and Mr. Ross got them into the game free if they wore their shirt, and the staff here served a tailgate meal. So there was everything from a band to games, and it was just a great way to start our first, our first home game and a great way for the kids to come together. So it was really exciting to see that, even in rain. Me, I'm not a big rain guy. Kids, it doesn't seem to matter to them. They were there regardless, and so was the staff. So my compliments to them. Then also, every year, Lebanon Community School Corporation, again, under the guidance of Ms. Scott, participates in the United Way campaign. United Way of Central Indiana, Boone County, serves our community in a number of ways, from financial support to programming support to a lot of student-focused initiatives. And so every year, Lebanon Community School Corporation staff comes together to participate, and we get very creative. Ms. Scott is a great motivational person, but sometimes it takes a little more than her words of encouragement and pleads and prayers. And so our current participation rate is about twenty percent, and we turn in a considerable amount of money. But we added to that challenge this year some opportunities for staff to seems to be at their heart, the ability to wear blue jeans. So I told Ms. Scott, we came up with a little idea, some motivation that wasn't mine, I won't take credit for it because I'm not a blue jean-wearing guy, but that's all right, that any school that has one-hundred percent participation will have an opportunity to have Fridays as a spirit Blue Jean Day for the semester. Well, apparently that got a lot of attention when Ms. Scott put that out there because she had a run on new application requests from a lot of schools. So rumor has it, we're going to have at least one and possibly two or three schools that will participate at a hundred percent. For the money that's contributed in support of United Way and knowing what United Way does for our students and our communities and our families, I can live with blue jeans on a Friday. And I know our staff is very committed. Sometimes it's hard to find the extra money when you're trying to pay for bills and make ends meet and do everything you need to do, but I'm extremely proud of what Diana's done and motivating our school corporation and their contribution towards United Way. So hopefully I'll be coming back to you next month and sharing with you that blue jeans are going to be there on Friday. So that's, that's good. So those are the items I bring. It's been a great start to the school year. It's been very rewarding to visit all the schools, see the SRO shirts out there. Chief Smith and his staff have just been very visible and very engaged. They hit the ground running. Some of the former active-duty law enforcement officers found out that there is no such thing as a kindergarten cop, that you're moving ninety to nothing with a bunch of little kids, even though they're five years old. And so our staff, administrative team, has been very engaging and welcoming. Just, schools look great. If you've not had a chance to be in the school, I want to thank the board. I know many of you made an effort to get out there, and we appreciate that. It's just been a good start to the school year. Pascal's group, we have two full classes this year, about seventeen and sixteen each, and we're excited because this year, the first graders, some of the first graders were the first group to go through the academy, and so we're looking to see how well they are first-grade ready. So just a lot of good things going on, a lot of, a lot of interesting and exciting activities with kids. Our fall sports are in full bloom, from the girls soccer team that won a tournament on Saturday with penalty kicks, to tennis teams that are moving well and trying to figure out how the ball bounces off the blue versus the dark blue, to everything that's going on. And I just, it's probably been, in my opinion, one of the better, smoother starts that I've had a chance to be with. So I'm very pleased to report that. So thank you for allowing me to share the good news of Lebanon Community School Corporation this month. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Just one question on the presentation tomorrow night. Will that be recorded or broadcast? Is there any way that parents can see that if they're not able to attend?
Mrs. Scott, I don't know if they're contractually, sometimes the national speakers have an issue with being recorded without some type of copyright, and I'm not sure. We can check and see. I'm, my experience has been no. They have, they have a fee. You know, they're here for the entire day as a nationally recognized individual, so I can't answer that. I'll try to find out. If we can, we will. Of course, Ms. Toddard is certainly here and would use her expertise to make sure we get that out. We publicize it quite a lot on social media, yes.
We actually have a contract, and then it's not allowed.
Oh, it is? Okay. Yeah. And Kent's not here tonight, so I'm not going to break the contract, but we'll continue to publicize it. Jen will continue to publicize it right up until it's there. I will be honest, I was very disappointed with the parental turnout last year. I think we were less than thirty parents showed up, and that's being very generous, and probably a third of those were staff members that were parents, myself included. It is a very good presentation in the sense that a lot of things that we don't know as parents, the kids do and have awareness of, it helps to know. So if anyone's watching or hearing, and of course, again, social media, we promote it, it's, it's money well spent for a very important parenting topic. So, sorry. Apparently, the answer was no.
No, thank you. Okay. Thanks.
I blame Diane. Thank you very much.
All right. Approval of minutes for the July seventeenth regular meeting. Like a motion to approve those, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions, comments on that? Nope. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Minutes pass. Audience to visitors, no one has signed in. Eagle Scout presentation, Jackson Shepherd.
My name is Jackson Shepherd. I am from Troop Three Five Nine, Lebanon, Indiana. I'm a freshman at the Lebanon High School, and I'm a member on the boys' tennis team. And I would like to present my goal for the new tennis shed and my idea for my Eagle Scout project. The reason we need it is because there's not enough storage space for the items that we have in the current barn, and we need to place to store our things and change before we go to a match, either away or home. What I was told that we needed was a sixteen-by-twenty shed, which is enough space for everyone to fit and get changed and store things. My idea was we do something like that where, without the window and with two doors, so that way it's easier to get in and no one can watch you change. My idea on where we'd like to put it is by the current shed or by Court One, where it's more level and we don't have to worry about putting gravel down and spending more money. I plan to do this by nine-one, which is September first, and I would like to build it by September fifteenth and completion mid-October, if I could. The team I would, and people I would be inviting are from my troop, Troop Three Five Nine, the members of both tennis teams and my friends and family that I know would come and help me. The building cost is roughly about three thousand seven hundred dollars. Building permit is one hundred fifty, and then the miscellaneous expenses is four hundred dollars. I was told we have funding for that, and the tennis team would provide the money. I would like, I wanted to present this tonight, and I'm glad I had the chance to. I wanted to gain funding approval tonight from the school board, and I wanted to identify the beneficiary contact.
Good. Jackson, thank you very much. I know that Jackson has been in discussion with Mr. Levine, and next week, I believe, we'll be meeting with Mr. Tate and Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Levine to discuss timeline, permit, acquisition, you know, projected needs for the facility and location, also a little more in-depth presentation on appearance, so it blends into what is the tennis facility. I know Mr. LaPage is working also as coach of the tennis team. The funding contribution really does not require board approval, but it is nice that Jackson has brought us for awareness because that is coming from, if I'm not mistaken here, Mr. Tate is coming from tennis, tennis funds. Yeah, please, help yourself. Yeah, coach, coach.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe LaPage. I'm the head tennis coach, and very proud of a freshman coming up and making presentation to you. Jackson is exactly correct. The money that will be used, every dollar of it, will come from past Flannery Open tennis tournaments. There's a separate 501(c)(3) that was set up where those monies were pulled into, and there is more than enough money to pay for a tennis shed and all the things that would come with it. In discussions with Mr. Levine, when I took the position as the high school tennis coach, was streamlining some of the monies that were within the program. We would like to all but dissolve that 501(c)(3) and bring all the monies into the school so there would, there'd be one-hundred percent transparency, so there wouldn't be anything that would be kept outside of the school. But as part of that, looking at having a space where the players, as Jackson said, could, could change, but also store some of their equipment as well, what happens, especially with the freshmen like Jackson, is they, on away matches, they, for, you know, to protect school property, they, they store their computers in their lockers. And so after we get back from a match, we let them back in the school, and just to be able to cut that out and be able to streamline some things, we'd like to provide a mini locker room space. We do not have a large number of players on our team compared to, you know, football and basketball and other sports. So we'd like to provide a small space within that sixteen-by-twenty shed to be able to have them, as Jackson said, be able to not only change, but be able to store some of their items, especially if they're not driving, so we could lock that up, keep it safe, and then be able to come back and get it, coming back from away matches and tournaments.
Would that be used by the middle school players as well, or would this only be high school? Or do you know?
I'm not sure at this point, to be honest. We had talked about just keeping it as high school, based on space and being able to incorporate with, with new boys' basket, boys' tennis coach, Mr. Godby, being able to work together towards that, whatever benefits the players as a whole.
Jackson, Jackson, does your proposal include removing the existing?
No.
No? So you'll build in conjunction, too?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
The restrooms, you have to go into the football field for the restroom?
That is correct.
Is that always open?
We do have, we have keys to the gate, but no, no, we do not have keys to the facilities.
Right.
We let Mr. Levine know that, you know, we have a, we have a match and like the students and their families to be able to use the restrooms there. During practices and things, if we have a player that needs to use the restroom, they come in through the side door in this one, this one area and use restroom there, so no facilities. There is electricity at the current, the current barn. We'd like to have that wired in and to incorporate the new shed.
All right.
Any additional questions? Jackson, certainly appreciate your initiative. We, we support the Eagle Scout process and admire your desire to help improve that facility. And so we look forward to working with you and look forward, and I would ask, once you finish the project, that if you would please come back and share with the board the finished product and let them know how things went throughout this effort for you, you know, as far as funding, and if the family who promised to help actually showed up to help. And so, but anyway, wish you the best of luck, certainly in your communication with Mr. Levine and Mr. Tate and Mr. Montgomery. I'm sure you'll come up with a great, a great plan, and we look forward to having this project finished. So thank you very much, and congratulations. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Jackson. Thanks.
You know, Jackson, part of that Eagle Scout certification is you have to sit through the board meeting for the whole thing. Yeah. Charles, I tried. I really tried to keep it up with that before you.
He has homework. It's about, you know.
You tried to do that for Charles?
It does not apply to any of you on the back row. I don't care if you got homework or not, you got to stay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. Item five, consent agenda for routine business matters. Mr. Tate, please.
This is our monthly financial report for our general fund. We've expended fifty-four point nine-five percent, transportation operation at fifty-one point six-two percent. At this time, I'd asked board approval to pay the claims numbered four-six-one-seven-two through four-six-four-five-six, and the payrolls dated July twentieth, August third, and August seventeen. The claims totaled two million, two hundred thousand, two hundred seventy-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. The payrolls totaled two million, thirty-three thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and four cents, for a total of four million, two hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred forty dollars and seventy-two cents. Request board approval this time.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve claims for payment four-six-one-seven-two through four-six-four-five-six and payrolls for July twentieth, August third, and August seventeenth, as presented.
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item six, agenda for routine staff matters. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you. Ms. Keith, I would ask that the board consider as a consent agenda items A, B, C, D. That's classified and certified staff, staff communications and ECA. This evening, I present in background notes for the board's review, under classified staff, three custodial personnel, three transportation hires, eleven food service, one substitute teacher, nine instructional assistants, and four office support staff aides. In addition to that, under certified staff, we're presenting this evening with regret letters of resignation from Stacy Hartley, Pam Pierce, and Christina Kelsey. Also, for the board's consideration then, under staff communications, new contract submissions for both Ms. Toddard and Mr. Gaha here at the high school. Also, Mrs. Outkout is recommending to the board Ms. Holly Susong for the second-grade teaching position that was added to assist with some of the class sizes there. In addition, Mrs. Solomon is recommending Jaclyn Barr for third-grade teaching position, and Elizabeth Evans for a fourth-grade teaching position. As a reminder to the board, those individuals have already started, and they were there, I believe, except one was there the very first day, and they were all there the second day of school. So in addition, I would compliment both Mrs. Outkout and Mrs. Solomon for aggressively hiring good employees to fill those positions. And then Ms. Die is hiring Mr. Walden for fifth-grade temporary hire. Again, he is also in place and started and has really integrated himself into the harney instructional team. And Ms. Williams is taking the agricultural teaching position at the middle school. Mr. Dungy has, is recommending her. Mr. O'Rourke is recommending Jacob Turner for the PE health position, and Nicole Abber for the CNA position. As a reminder, Jacob was our strength and conditioning coach last year, and we're bringing him on as a full-time certified staff to help in the PE department, but also continue with the weight training program. And also then in the CNA program, while that is our employ, it's entitled only, that has to be that way for state certification. Believe we have thirty-eight, I'm looking at Mr. O'Rourke and Ms. Scott, thirty-eight young ladies in the CNA program?
Yes.
That is an outstanding number. That is part of the work-based learning program, and so we're excited about that. And then it's joint services. Mrs. Schreiber is recommending Rebecca Hamad as a Traders Point Academy position. If you recall, we have to provide special needs services at Traders Point. Continuing on the last topic, under ECA, Mr. Dungy is recommending Ms. Amanda Scoble, current special needs teacher at the middle school, to assume the duties of athletic director. Mr. Dungy's also recommending the following coaches. In lieu of an athletic director position being opened, Doyle has taken that role on, and those are Mr. Godby for tennis, Ms. Spoyer for volleyball, Ms. Balding for cheer coach, Ms. Fiedler Fusil as a seventh-grade cheer coach, Folden as sixth-grade cheer coach, Loomcooler as the assistant girls soccer coach, and Aaron Hughes as a volunteer girls soccer coach. Mr. O'Rourke is recommending Mr. Dardini from our agricultural department as department chair. I think that's an excellent choice and a good decision. Mr. Levine is recommending Mr. Ross, something about bad pennies, as the assistant athletic director at Lebanon High School. Mr. Levine is also recommending, and I know the board has addressed some of these positions, but Mr. Austin McCluskey as an assistant wrestling coach, Nick Carruthers as a girls' varsity, head varsity basketball coach, and assisting coach Carruthers will be DeeDee Williams as a junior varsity basketball coach, and Mr. David Teague as the girls' varsity assistant coach. I apologize for the high number of personnel that we're bringing to the board this evening, but it's that time of year. So I would appreciate the board's review and consideration of those requests this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So I'd like a motion to approve all of those items together, A, B, C, and D, please.
Make that motion. I'll second.
Any questions on any of those staff?
With all the food service and custody, are we up to full numbers? Because I noticed we had tons of signs all over town.
Let's start with the, with the great news. Stokes is fully staffed. And so, fully aides in there. Food service, I think Jennifer was fully staffed at the elementary levels, and Charles, I'll defer to you, but I guess she's not here.
She's not fully staffed, no.
Not? Okay. But there were some openings at the high school and middle school, but they were operational. We didn't miss a meal, and so she did have some folks that hired and quit very quickly. But I think, I don't have the total number. Mr. Wary, I'll get that and provide that to the board. I give compliment to Jennifer because she was down fifty percent of her staff about a week and a half before school started. So, and I think our signs paid off. It's not something that I'm comfortable doing, but you do what you do to get the folks through the door.
Neighborhood schools are doing the same thing?
Yeah.
Same signs.
And same with, with Ms. Nichols at Transportation. Becky does a good job, and so we continue to advertise, we continue to train, we continue to, you know, we, we don't bend our rules on any of the security background checks. We don't bend our rules on any of the expectations of work performance.
Just makes it all the harder.
But you got to hold a line somewhere, and, you know. Until I call you folks and ask if you could help come serve lunch someday, we'll continue to keep going the way we're going. But, so I'll get, I'll get the status of that. Mr. Wary, that's a good question, so thank you.
Is an office manager at the middle school, is that just?
Receptionist.
Okay.
Position. Yeah. So it's every building, they have a building assistant at the elementary and a secretary. So at the high school, there is a, Mr. Dungy has a secretary to the assistant, or to the principal, and then the receptionist that manns the front, front desk.
Anything else? No? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I think, Mr. Levine, you have a couple of the new hires here with us this evening.
Yes. First, I'd like to thank the school board for approving these fine young gentlemen here. I see you. I did want to say one thing about the coaches first. I know Dr. Taylor mentioned, we will eventually get all the winter coaches approved for the high school, but the reason we had to get these guys approved now is they're due to the program, and we are already started to work out of season, so they have to be approved as coaches prior to the season starting. But we already have some sort of coaches that are staying in program, so we'll have that list to you prior to the winter season starting. So I want to make sure you understood why I commented so early to you. First, Assistant Bob Ross, most of you know Bob, and I'll just love to speak for himself.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity to return to the school corporation after just a short time away, a couple of years. It's like coming home again. I told Phil, we were setting up for a ballgame the other night, I said, you know, it sounds like it feels like sixteen years ago when I was the athletic director here. Not a lot has changed except procedures and I just say regulations. But thank you, and I look forward to being back here at, at the high school, and you know, we all do best, and that's for the kids and the parents and the family. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm very excited, pleased to meet, introduce you Nick. Nick comes with a tremendous amount of experience. I'll let him talk a little bit of himself, but also I want to thank you for allowing him to be in the classroom here, because it's great when you have coaches in the building. He's done a wonderful job in that area so far with the sports needs program. But I'm extremely excited. We had some meetings, parent meetings, unit meetings, and his enthusiasm and passion for the game, it just is fantastic. I mean, he's got me moving around and motivating me to jump through hoops already. How are you all doing? I would like to thank you all for, for having me. I thank Dr. Taylor, Mr. Lord, who's been there, showing me everything I need to know as a community and tradition. I would thank you for allowing the opportunity for myself and my staff to have a year. How are you all doing? Thank you all for having me. I thank Dr. Taylor, Mr. O'Rourke, Ms. Levine. They showed me everything I need to know as a community and tradition. I want to thank you for allowing the opportunity for myself and my staff to have here in this beautiful school, this beautiful community that will positively impact on some beautiful children that I've already met and I'm still meeting every day and I'm recruiting from other schools. We are, we are really excited about the opportunity that we have here to be, I mean, just a powerhouse academically and athletically for years to come. And the individuals that I have asked to come here with me, I have left bigger programs and they don't care about the money. They believe in what we are going to do. They believe in the young ladies that we're going to impart part of ourselves in, not just to make them better basketball players, to make them better individuals. So, I want to say thank you to the board, thank you to Dr. Taylor and my wife. Hope to see you again. As a matter of fact, I expect to see you.
Yeah, Dave. Ms. Levine? I, I think the term you're looking for is infectious. I'm at a football game Friday night and there's Coach and we're talking basketball and weight training and heading up to this and that and the other, and I didn't even get a chance to talk to him once we got to the press box because somebody else had his ear and they didn't let it go for the first half, so, welcome on board. Coach, appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I promise I will come back and make the promise.
Very good. Thank you to the board for your support and approval on those personnel issues this evening.
Thank you.
You guys got homework too?
Hey, Bob, that's kind of weird leaving a meeting, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. I've never done that.
He's part-time.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, we actually need to open another hearing within the meeting, so, I will call that hearing to order for the GEO bond 2018. Mr. Tate?
So, School Corporation is funding multiple projects along with purchase of buses through the issuance of this GEO bond. Proceeds from this bond issue must be appropriated prior to being spent. We have notified and advertised in the paper to our local patrons this hearing. So, at this time, I would open it up for public and/or board comment on the projects that we have planned with this GEO bond.
Comments?
Hearing none. I believe we can close the hearing.
Okay, hearing is now closed.
Next, I would ask board approval for adoption of the appropriation resolution Exhibit A. As you are aware, when you have funds, you must have appropriations approved. This does not take DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance approval. It just takes local board approval. So, I'd ask approval of appropriation resolution Exhibit A.
Okay, I'd like a motion to approve appropriation resolution Exhibit A. Those have been provided in your background notes. They're rather lengthy and I don't think Mr. Tate probably wants to read them all.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes.
Okay, next I'd ask board approval for Exhibit B. This is the final bond resolution which establishes the amount to be borrowed, the maximum term of repayment, and the maximum interest rate. It also contains the details about the bond such as the form of the bond. The resolution also authorizes the publication of the notice of sale of the bonds and establishes the maximum cost. An underwriter or bank may bid for the bonds. It also establishes a bid committee who will award the bonds to the lowest bidder. I'd ask for approval of that at this time.
Okay. Like a motion to approve the final bond resolution that's been provided as Exhibit B in your background notes.
I'll make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes as well.
And the last item that deals with the GEO bond is a request for board approval of the agreement of services of the registrar and paying agent. Basically, you're approving that we use Bank of New York Mellon as the source of these funds to handle the sales and manage the debt.
Okay. All right, I'd like to, I'd like a motion to approve the agreement for services of registrar and paying agent, please.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on that one? Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And item eight, permission to advertise the budget. Mr. Tate?
Ask board approval to advertise our 2019 school budgets, education fund, debt service fund, referendum debt fund, operations fund, pension severance debt fund, rainy day fund, along with our three-year capital projects plan and a five-year bus replacement plan. Request permission to advertise at this time.
Permission to advertise. All right, like a motion to give Mr. Tate permission to advertise the budget, please.
Make the motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions on that?
I will have to say, the advertisement's a lot cleaner than what it was in the past.
I think it's easier to understand for patrons.
Yeah, most of them.
Anything else on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Elementary handbook revision. Mrs. Outkalt.
Good evening. We have a proposal for a change in the weighted grade category. We are proposing assessments to be weighted at sixty percent and in-class work at forty percent. In the past, we've had a category for homework and although we as elementary principals here in this district and research says it's meaningful practice for students to be engaged in homework, and we certainly still support that, we are proposing that that category be removed as a grade for students. And the work that we've done with Common Assessments with Karen Bailey is moving us forward toward a standards-based assessment. And this is one step toward that, removing the ten percent for homework as a grade. And also with the Tiger Pride Initiative, the kids are being recognized for the completion of homework in that efficiency category of pride. And so, that's, that's the reason for the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Like a motion to approve that change to the elementary handbook, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any questions about that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Facilities project, sorry, facilities policy revision. Dr. Taylor?
Yes, this is a policy revision that we've gone through the first two readings with the board. Just as a reminder, what we're talking about is making a phrase change from participant fee to, from administration fee, from participant fee, excuse me, to an administration fee. And the reason we're doing that, again, as a reminder, if you look at the Group As, a number of those organizations have some type of participation fee, but that we didn't want to have our billing based on that, but on if you charge admission to the facility. So, requesting the board's approval to make that change in policy of general school facility usage from the term participant fee to admission fee.
All right, thank you. I'd like a motion to approve that policy change for facilities, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions about that? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Approval of teacher appreciation grant policy, Dr. Taylor?
Policy thirty-two, twenty-point-oh-one, teacher appreciation grant. This needs approval by September fifteenth per state IDOE directive. The verbiage is changing per their directive. And on the second page, starting with the percentage of teacher appreciation grant becomes part of the base salary through the sentence. The addition to base salary is not subject to the collective bargaining but is discussable, will be removed. This policy is reviewed annually by the board and is subject to change based on IDOE directive. So, this is relating directly to the teacher appreciation grant dollars that we've yet to receive, but we hopefully will. So, I'm asking for the board's approval of that verbiage change as presented.
Okay. Like a motion to approve the teacher appreciation grant policy, please.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you. Next, we have policy fifty-three-thirty, which is in now, it's third reading and for board review and consideration. Fifty-three-thirty deals with medication distribution. The change includes the procedures for both drop-off and pickup of medications at the elementary schools. In the secondary schools, they do delineate between the two schools based on the age of the student. So, again, this is third reading. Would ask the board's favorable consideration of the request to change the verbiage in fifty-three-thirty.
Okay, like a motion to approve the change to policy five-three-three-zero, please.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Any questions on that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Policy passes.
Thank you. And last for this evening, I ask the board's favorable consideration of approval of the single point of entry policy. As a reminder, our single point of entry is now the video accessibility procedure we have at all schools. To be quite honest, it's working very well. Not only for staff members, but I've been at each building and just had the coincidence to be there when people were using it. One or two questions, but no one is at any opposition. I've had conversation with all the building principals. While it can be a little time-demanding at some of our secondary schools, it is being well-maintained and I think it's achieving the desired goal, which was to restrict entrance and exit to the building in a more controlled environment. So, having said that, I would ask for the board's approval of the policy as, as has been previously submitted.
Okay, like a motion to approve this single point of entry policy, please.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Questions on that?
I noticed here at the high school, at the athletic, we have a ring the doorbell thing for the athletic office. Are they, so you can still go straight to the athletic office?
Don't believe, no, that's, that's the old back in the day when...
Okay, so we need to probably take that sign down because it's still on there.
We'll do that.
And then also, I noticed that the signage is starting to be put up. I know that it was there. I know at some of the schools, I've went to about all of them and looked at them and used them. That signage, we may need to make that a little bit bigger because I've watched people just sit there and go...
That's temporary signage. We're having signs manufactured, but in addition, in the time being, we had a script that was produced, that mailed out to all the buildings, and then the signage was produced to kind of put there. I mean, at our office, we had a handwritten sign saying, "Point to the bell." So, we should have general signage in all the buildings.
Okay, cool, good.
But we wanted something to try to be uniform to start with because, you know, families that had kids at one elementary and the middle school and the high school, we didn't want them to be confronted with three different procedural, although the concept was the same.
Right, absolutely.
So, yes, thank you for that. We'll, we'll get on the athletic interest. Now, if you recall, real quickly, there was some discussion of, once we go through this process, if we find we need to install a video entrance at the athletic end, and that's generally when, and I think Ms. Levine's gone, but when people start to come for winter tickets or season tickets or sectional or whatever, there's a lot of traffic down here. If we find that needs to be done, we may come back to the board and ask for the permission to install a single point of, it would be single at that point, but it would be controlled access entry on the athletic entrance.
Right. And they're locked. They can only go to the vestibule area right there, so, makes sense.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item fourteen, File Wave renewal. Mr. Martin?
Each year, I come asking your favorable consideration of File Wave. This year, the File Wave system is a system for mobile device management. It allows technology to remotely install software, apply Apple OS updates, and perform controlling functions on the MacBooks and iPads. We started File Wave at the start of the second school year, or second year of the LHS MacBook program in 2013. It's proven to be invaluable as a management tool. I submit the purchase request for the renewal of our File Wave licensing in the amount of thirty-three thousand, twenty-four dollars even. And this is for twenty-five hundred MacBook licenses and twenty-two hundred iPad licenses. That's about a ten percent overage for us to be able to have some old machines online while we bring on new line, new machines.
Okay. Like a motion to approve the File Wave renewal, please.
I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Any questions on that? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
New business. Mr. Tate?
Have a request from the eighth grade team, supported by Mr. Dungy, for an annual trip to Washington DC. Dates requested are October nine through thirteen. Cost of the trip, six hundred and seventy-five dollars per student. The itinerary's been placed in your background notes, so I recommend board approval of this trip.
Like a motion to approve the eighth grade trip to Washington DC, please.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Other business? Dave?
I got three things. One, there was something in the paper the other day all about the Harney PTO situation when money was taken. Are there safeguards in all, all four schools now to make sure that doesn't happen again?
We do not see their books. We do not manage their books. We're not responsible for their books.
Each, so, it is not a school-funded account. But each principal, we've worked with them and Harney just happened to be one that kind of led the way in talking to them about checks and balances and having, for example, more than one person be responsible for signing the check, having a third-party audit. But we cannot direct that. We can simply advise that. So, to answer the question is, we're recommending some good practices, accounting practices, but we have no real authority to mandate they implement those practices.
Okay. And then, how many stop-arm violations has there been?
Chief Smith, do you know? Can you, or Charles? I don't know, Mr. Herr.
And then, another question. Do we give out sports passes to all LCSC employees?
No, we do not.
Why not? Wouldn't that be a nice perk?
Would, but that's also a funding stream for athletics. So, you know, we do provide select, but if you're going to then put out six hundred sports passes and then for family members and those. Mr. Levine, for example, we opened it up for the high school kids this week for the black T-shirt kind of thing to generate that. During basketball season, we generally do something similar. But it's more of a consideration of the lost revenue that we would have from that.
Do high school teachers get it?
I don't believe they'd, Mr. O'Rourke, can you answer that?
I'm not sure. I don't, I think they get a discount.
They get a discount.
I don't want to speak for that.
I'm on the sports boosters. They do get a discount. They don't get a free pass.
To your point, Mr. Herr, it's a good, it would be a great perk. And if it would encourage people to show, that would be good. But then the cost of that is to Mr. Levine, who uses that revenue to pay everything from officials to, you know, scholarships and some of the athletic packages that kids can't afford, so, it's a balance.
Yeah, I just wondered.
Anything else?
Sure.
That's it? Anybody else? All right, our next meeting is September eighteenth here at seven o'clock. We are adjourned.
All right.